Brenda Pham, I'd like to begin with you if I can, please.
Sure.
Welcome. First of all, I'll tell you what I'll do. I'm going to give each candidate one minute to make a brief opening statement about your candidacy and why you feel you're the best candidate for this position. Go ahead, Brenda.
Oh, Steve, do you want to remind them why I'm here?
I will. Thank you very much. Scott Travis is on, who has provided coverage of the Broward County School District for a long time, and we really welcome his perspective and his questions. However, he's not a member of the editorial board, and he plays no role whatsoever in any endorsement decisions that are made. The endorsements are made by myself, by Dan Sweeney, and other members of the Sunset Editorial Board, who may view this videotape later on. So I want to be sure that's clear. Okay, with that understanding, Brenda, one minute for an opening statement, please.
Sure. My name is Brenda Pham. I'm running for Broward County School Board, District Six. Thank you for having me, and I'm glad that you gave me this opportunity. If you do hear some banging, it's because the roofers are still up there working on that darn old roof. So anyway, I am a parent. I've lived in Broward County more than 30 years. I am an attorney. I'm also an educator. I have a Bachelor of Education in education, distributive education to be specific. And I have also taught in a high school where I student taught. And I've also substitute taught in several schools throughout Bucks County, Pennsylvania. And I've also been an adjunct law professor. But more important than that, I care about the children and the parents of this community. And there's a lot of issues that really need addressing and need help. And one is improving our education, improving our safety. And based on my experience as an attorney, I feel that I'm in the best position to at least look at legal documentation and see what we're looking at when we're looking at contracts for roofing, for other aspects. And as an educator, I've been through the experience of being working at schools and working with students. And I've been doing free legal work for children for the past 10 years. And so my sole interest is helping this community with their children and getting a better education and improving our schools.
All right. Thank you very much. Steve Julian, opening statement.
Thank you guys again for having us. My name's Steve Julian. The reason I believe I am best for this position for Broward County School Board, Seat Six, is, one, I'm born and raised here in Broward County. I know this community because this community raised me. I spent about 15 years in the private sector business while I put my wife through med school and residency. And now that she had finished and she's working here in plantation, it gave me the opportunity to give back to the community. And the best way for me to do that is to help our kids. I decided about a year and a half ago that I wanted to be able to go back and get an education in clinical mental health. So I started my master's program over at Nova Southeastern University. And I plan on pursuing my PhD following the completion of my master's program. My main goal with that is to be able to provide quality mental health care to our school kids. Not only do I have the business acumen and the knowledge to really make sure we're spending our money for the best return on our investment in our school system, I understand both the emotional and mental health needs of our kids and teachers in the school system. I believe I'm uniquely qualified in that aspect, and I'm looking forward to being able to help our community and make our school system the best in class. Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much. My first question is for you, Brenda Pham. I'm going to read something that I read on your campaign website and ask you to be as specific as you can be about where and when and how this happened. Quote, "The Broward County School Board secretly allows our children to wear clothing of the opposite sex in school without telling parents." End quote. Does that seem familiar to you? Can you tell me which schools that happened in and when?
Actually, I'm not aware of that. The only thing that I'm aware of specifically related to that would be, parents have told me that there is a school that is taking boys, specifically boys in a middle school, into another classroom, and they're putting nail polish on their nails, and they are dressing them. I can't personally say that I witnessed it. I can't disclose who my clients are, but I can tell you that I have had complaints about that. And that would be actually a school within my district itself, District Six.
Do you have firsthand knowledge, though, of what I've just read, which is that the children are allowed to wear clothing of the opposite sex and parents are not notified?
As I just indicated, that's what the parent indicated to me. And it involved two male boys.
Can you tell us which school?
No, but I can tell you what, just like I said, it was in Broward County, District Six.
Can you tell us when?
Since this year, 2022.
And can you tell us what the evidence is that, as your blog said or your website said, that the school board secretly endorses this policy?
That, I hope I didn't say that. I'm hoping that the school board doesn't secretly endorse the policy. But I think that there's things that have been brought to the school board's attention, but they haven't addressed them.
Do you see where this could give rise to someone to say that you're not being completely truthful in some of your campaign statements?
No, I disagree with that because I am giving the parents the benefit of doubt. How I got into this was a mother contacted me because her second grade boy came out of the school crying because he said he didn't want to have to marry a man when he got older. And when the mother told him, "That's not true. You don't have to marry a man," he got absolutely hysterical and said, "Yes, I do. The teacher said it's the law." So things are definitely happening. I have things in writing for the attorney that they retained to represent the school that said that they were showing LGBTQ movies to second graders without parental consent or knowledge because it was during lunch, and they didn't need consent because it was for entertainment. So when I'm saying secreting things, that's what I said. Things are happening in the community that people are taking a blind eye to because parents should be notified if you're showing your child. A seven-year-old has no business. Two little boys were crying that day in that classroom because the other little boy didn't have, he didn't have a father. And the movies involved just fathers. And he kept saying, "Where's the moms? Where's the moms?" And he got upset. These are little children that we're trying to look after to make sure that they're not traumatized and they don't need mental health assistance.
Okay. And you went through that a little bit quickly, but I just want to, I want to ask you again. I'm trying to follow your explanation.
Sure.
LGBTQ movies shown to second graders.
Yes, sir.
Which school?
Again, I would have to get permission from my client to disclose that. But I can produce the letters from their attorney. I think that would be okay to produce. But as long as it's not coming from my client, where they're admitting to the fact that that's what they were doing.
Let me switch back to Steve Julian and ask, Mr. Julian, do you want to just respond to anything that Ms. Pham has just said about the Broward School District?
I've been in very close contact with, as you know, the teachers of our school system being endorsed by the teachers' union, the principals of our school system being endorsed by the principals' union, every group here in Broward County that has a stake within our school system, being born and raised here in Broward County, going through our school system. I have never heard from anyone that things like that are happening in our schools.
As I said, I have proof from the representation that the school procured. I also have another incident. I will not mention names of who's involved, but of a school teacher taking fourth graders into a sex ed class where the parents had all opted them out. I wrote letters to the school board because the parents were afraid to disclose themselves because they were afraid of retaliation. But I can tell you that that specific teacher was fired. So just because he's not aware of it, I think I have my ear right to the wind where the parents are coming to me. Even teachers are turning in other teachers for what they're doing. Because I can protect them under the guise of my legal relationship with them.
Ms. Pham, can you understand that if what you're saying is true, and these activities are going on, that the parents of children would want to know if this was happening in the school their own kids attended?
Absolutely, they would want to know.
And you have a responsibility to let the public know that as a candidate for public office?
Well, as I said, the incident with the teacher that took in the six girls that had been opted out of sex ed was reported to the school board. Whether they opted to disclose that or not is really up to them. I was acting on behalf of the parents who did not want to go public. So I can't go beyond my own client's wishes. I'm sorry.
Okay. Let me switch to a slightly different topic. And then, right after this, I'll open the floor to Mr. Travis and to Dan Sweeney. Ms. Pham, you're an attorney and you're a member of the Florida Bar. Are you aware that your opponent has furnished a cease and desist letter to you for allegedly making false and disparaging and defamatory statements about him?
It just got searched me not even a half hour before this, we went on to do this interview. So my perception is the timing was planned out so it would be here. Yeah, I just had it. I just reviewed it. So the accusations are false. When you don't have, you can't go after someone on their credentials or their background, then you make fake allegations. And that's what these are. So I know nothing about him being, what did it say, a criminal arrested. I don't know what they're talking about. So, and I'll just dispute it. That's the only thing you can do. But it's not legitimate, and it's just propaganda to just try to distract from the credentials and the qualifications of the candidates immediately before the election.
Let me briefly ask, Mr. Julian, why you sought legal advice and why you had this cease and desist order issued on your opponent?
Yes, sir. I got into this race because I want to give back to my community. There's so much we can do to make a positive impact in Broward County. Going into this race, as you all know, I'm no politician. I come from the business world. I expected to be able to run on merit and be able to run on our views and our goals for our school systems. Unfortunately, on many occasions, Brenda Pham has gone out of her way to make allegations about myself regarding me being incarcerated, having legal issues, which I've never had more than a speeding ticket. To have her people on Election Day going around and using cartoon pornography and posting pictures, this is not how elections should be run, especially when you're talking about what's good for our children. And I'm not going to allow anyone to defame my name and say that I am something that I'm not.
We call this technique fogging as an attorney. It's trying to take away from real issues and put a side issue that doesn't exist up as a roadblock. But I can assure you that no one is, from my campaign, at least than I'm aware of, has put any kind of cartoon pictures in reference to my opponent, nor do I know anything about any criminal arrests or anything of him, and never has not even been a part of my campaign.
We're going to return to this subject, I think, in a few minutes. But I do want to just pause and ask Scott Travis and Dan Sweeney for any questions for either of the candidates. Scott, go ahead.
Okay, all right. I guess maybe if we could discuss the big issues that have been going on here, which is the grand jury report came out recently. Four board members were suspended, and we've gotten four that were replaced. What do you feel about the governor's decision to remove those and replace those? And how do you feel that the reform, or the board that calls itself the Reform Board is doing? And I'll ask that to both candidates.
Sure.
Who wants to start?
I don't think the government, the governor had a choice other than to remove those people. You had 17 students that were killed, and in addition, some of the teachers at that school. If he didn't act and just turned a blind eye to all the suffering that those people went through, I think that would have been a travesty in and of itself. Are you asking if I trust the grand jury? The grand jury was impaneled up in Tallahassee. They weren't from Broward County, so they didn't have the same kind of emotion, that emotionally charged situation that we would have here. But most importantly, they even wrote a two-page dissertation in the front of that saying how they were unbiased, and they wanted everyone to know that they were unbiased. And they went through two years of documents, contracts, and depositions in order to come to that conclusion. And I'd like to say also, if you haven't read this book, Why Meadows Dead, and you look at the reasons for this parent whose daughter was killed, at all the flawed things that happened at that Broward County School District, and there's more than 42 where he stopped and said, "I can continue on and on," there's no question in my mind that action needs to be taken.
Why do you believe that it was a Tallahassee grand jury?
Because that's where the Supreme Court of Florida was. I thought the grand jury was pulled from that pool up there.
From Broward, Palm Beach, and Miami-Dade Counties.
Right. I wasn't aware of that. I thought they were pulled from up there. If not, I would have made that suggestion, just to take the emotional charge out of the situation.
Okay, Mr. Julian.
It's interesting. The board in and of itself, in the times that it's been on, has been being investigated, has not done enough. Absolutely agree. The timing was very interesting to me. When we look at the press run that DeSantis had done just prior to removing them, came down and arrested a handful of convicted felons that believed they had their rights back to vote. And then to follow that up with the removal of the school board, when we know we have an upcoming election where our community's going to be able to pick the new members. If this was not politically charged, the only person he really would have removed would have been the one person that has two years remaining. We should allow our community to vote on who we want. To replace all members with individuals of his own support group is a little bit disheartening to me. It doesn't reflect the values of Broward County. And I'm hoping, once I'm in, to be able to represent Broward County the way the community wants to be represented.
And I dispute that. I completely disagree with that, and I'll tell you why. This should not be an issue of politics. This is about what's for the best interest of the children. And it's not in the best interest of the children that go to school in Broward County to keep it in office, people that are corrupt, that don't protect them, that don't keep their promises, and don't live up to the standards that we all know and expect. No child should go to school and not feel safe. None. And I don't think that school board member should have sat on there another minute, knowing that they put our child currently at risk, and they've done it in the past.
Okay, Ms. Pham, I wanted to ask you, you've, obviously, your positions tend to be more conservative than Mr. Julian, no doubt, but probably also more conservative than Broward County as a whole. It's the most Democratic county in the state. How do you balance the issues of your own views and what is, and also the fact that your constituency may not be as conservative as you are?
I'm glad you asked that question because I have never considered myself a radical or a conservative. That term came from you guys, the Sunset No. And I find it amusing. But even more important, I consider myself a person, a normalist. I consider myself a person with common sense. And I think that's really what the community wants as a whole. This is not about politics. This is not about liberal and right or left. This is about our children. We can't make them political pawns. We have to do what's best for them. And I am in the best interest of those children, and we're qualified. We're qualified. Just the fact that I've had life experiences as a parent, just the fact that I've had a child that's gone through crisis, just the fact that I've had a child that's been bullied. You can't just pass that on to someone. You have to live it. You really have to live it. And I have the passion. And I'm not a silver spooner. I'm not a trust fund baby. I don't come from much. Yet, at the same time, I am where I am because I fought to be here. No one handed it to me. It's not like I was entitled. I fought for this. And I'm so proud that to be here right now. So I thank you for that question. I do.
Okay. Very good.
I can't, there's a woman's voice in the background. Do you hear it?
Yeah, maybe. There's, I'm in a, in a business where there are other people in the background. I can't do anything about that. So I'll do my best. Ms. Pham, if you're elected to the Broward County School Board, would you be in favor of retaining Vicky Cartwright as the superintendent of schools?
I don't know. I don't know. And the reason I'm saying that is because I'm open-minded. I would never dream of making a decision with actually going through documentation, meeting people, and seeing what they're about. You can't just judge from the outside. I think that would be a very unfair position for me to take. And you need to live in the moment. And that moment would be meeting with all those school board members, getting their feel for Vicky Cartwright and how she's doing for the school, and then making a judgment on my own for the experience I have with her.
Mr. Julian, what's your opinion on that same question?
I think she was put in a position that was very, very difficult. I think, once I'm in, meeting with the board members, having conversations about having true oversight, measurable goals, and making sure those goals are hit. I'm not in a place currently to be able to see the ins and outs. And I would want to make sure that she's being held accountable to the goals we put in line. And I think that is key. If we do not keep accountability in the school system, we're going to continue to have issues such as not having correct timeframes for building issues, not having corrections to issues in schools. So yeah, oversight would be my key.
Yeah, I think that a lot of that predates her, too, that the timelines for the construction. So you have to be fair and judge from the point of time that she entered the picture as well.
All right. Thank you for that. Mr. Julian, generally speaking, and I'd like you to be specific if you can, what is your assessment of the job that the interim school board has done since on or about August 26th? Is there anything in particular that the new school board has done? I'm talking about the Ron DeSantis appointees here. Is there anything they've done that you think is particularly good or particularly bad?
I don't think they've been in long enough to do anything of any substantial good. I believe a lot of things are being rushed. And I would like to see what our new board can do. We're going to have the opportunity to have the biggest change in the school board in recent history. And we're going to have a whole new culture. Regardless of who we vote in on, on November 8th, there are going to be a good amount of new members that'll bring new breath to it. My goal is to make the change that Broward County wants to see, represent our citizens, and help them build a school system that they can be proud of.
Ms. Pham, I want to ask you the same question. To assess for us, good and bad, both or either, the performance of the interim school board members?
Coming from a common sense point of view, standpoint, I like the fact that the school board objected to paying the law fees of the school board members that have been removed. I think that's a big burden on the taxpayers that they shouldn't have to bear. I think that the reason that the report didn't come out, as Stephen Julian stated, was all about timing, and that was partially and mostly due to Deborah Corn and some other school board members who wanted to not be, I'm sorry, they did not want that grand jury report coming out before the election. So it was put on hold from 2019 due to appeals. So I like the fact that we're backing away from supporting individual school boards that have wronged the community. I really do. And I like the fact that now it's being considered even the pension that they're supposed to get is limited by law to eight weeks, and that was going to be extended. And they're looking at that and evaluating that, saying, "Why should these people be compensated when they let us down?"
Mr. Julian, was that the right decision by the interim board to stop paying the legal fees of, I think it was two board members, and it was after the date of August 26th when the grand jury report came out? Do you agree with that decision?
That's a tough one. So the issue being, we have precedents where it's been consistent that they have paid for legal fees for members of the board. If it were to be a change of policy, it shouldn't be done once a member is already under indictment. It should be a change of policy once it's passed that point and start really with a new leaf. I don't personally think if a politician gets himself into trouble, they should have to, or they should have someone else pay for their fees. But that has been the precedent. And yeah, I would agree with them being able to use what they've been given.
Okay. Hold on a second. Hold on, Ms. Pham. I'm going to open the floor to my colleagues here, Dan and the...
Just, can I just throw in one quick response to that? See, I would take it, I would take it one level further. And why I'm saying this, as an attorney, I would put that we, in our contracts, if you do the community wrong, if you do something wrong, no, then we're not responsible for legal fees. So we don't even have to have this discussion. When you quit a job, are you still from a company? Are you entitled to still be compensated? No. No. And this should be whether, we're supposed to be serving the community here. We are community servants, and we should not ask the public to make those payments. Uh-uh.
Your comment, Ms. Pham, I just want to break it down a little bit. I believe you said, "When you do something wrong," something with which I think everybody can agree. And this gets, this gets to the heart of the grand jury report.
Yes.
The grand jury report is a highly detailed report, but it is a report of accusations and allegations that were not proven in a court of law with evidence. Do you agree with that?
I want to stand behind Why Meadows Died again. With these parents' involvement, the investigation they did, and they looked into it, and they come to the firm conclusion that these school board members were negligent, grossly negligent. And so did the grand jury. So civilly, they would be on the hook for money. But for, I think they're protected to a certain amount by the, being a government employee or county employee. But no, I think that they should be held accountable. If they're not held accountable criminally, then at least civilly, why should we be paying legal fees for inaction and allowing those students to die? This was a travesty. We can't just move on from it. We have to learn from it. We have to learn from it and stop this from happening again and protect Broward County and the residents.
Floor is open for my colleagues for questions.
Yeah, real quick. You mentioned in getting rid of the, this is for Brenda Pham, just a point of clarification. You mentioned getting rid of the four school board members and replacing them, that it was a decision that should have been politicized and, you know...
It should not have been politicized, yes.
How is removing those four and replacing them with members of the opposite political party, the governor's political party, not a politicization of it?
I'm going to, I can't respond for the governor, but I'm going to trust the judgment that he put in the best people he knew for an interim amount of time that is limited to possibly two months to help the citizens of Broward. And he wanted a team that could act quickly, would be reliable, and get something done to protect our community and our schools.
And you think the people he put in are the best people to do that?
I'm saying that he thinks that they're the best people. I'm not going to pass a judgment on his judgment. I don't know the backgrounds of everyone on here. I know Tori. I've seen Tori at commission meetings, and I think he's very vocal, and I think he's very fair, and I think he's, it was a perfect selection. So I can't comment on others that I haven't seen in action, but I have seen Tori. And he's a very respected member of the community. It doesn't matter what party he's from. He's going to do the right thing. And that's why the school board is not partisan. It's not about parties. It's about doing the right thing. And what the right thing is the best thing for our kids.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Scott?
Yeah. Hi, Ms. Pham. One of the concerns I've heard about you is that you tend to say a lot of anti-LGBTQ rhetoric, whether it's, you know, even earlier in the discussion today, that you mentioned about, about kids being traumatized or something to that effect, about, about something related to homosexuality, and that you, I think you've been in support of banning materials that might be considered pro-LGBTQ. Can you address that and what's your feeling? Because we do have, Broward has traditionally been a community that's been very supportive of the LGBTQ community. So I was wondering what your view on that community is.
Sure. Actually, I have many gay friends, and I've been endorsed by the Log Cabin Republicans. And they're actually throwing a fundraiser next week. It got delayed because of the storm to help my campaign. And they're highly supportive of me. As far as banning any books that are LGBTQ, the only books that, and I haven't called to ban any books, and if you read my blog, you'll see that, what I propose is age-appropriate materials, age-appropriate. So in the instance of the second graders, it just wasn't appropriate for those topics to be introduced at seven years old. They got upset and crying. It's not normal to have kids just break out in tears in class. It doesn't happen. So they're not duking it out, I understand. But...
Learning about a gay person makes you break down and cry. Is that what you're saying? Is that traumatic that being gay is?
What was traumatic to the little boy, and I'm going to almost speak verbatim for what he said, is that being told that he has to marry a man when he gets older. It's the fact that he's obligated or it's mandatory, the fact that he's told it's the law. It's scary to young children. Maybe he wasn't at the same maturity level of another seven-year-old, because everyone comes from diverse backgrounds, and we welcome that. So some people are more sheltered. Some people have different religious beliefs. But we have to be very accepting, Scott. We just can't say, "We're going to put everybody into one little box, and you better be prepared and listen to this, and you can handle it. You're old enough." Doesn't happen. It doesn't happen that way. These are children. These are young children. And I'm saying, for two children to break down in tears, it's a travesty. It is a travesty. And the parents had to both explain exactly what's going on because they didn't get it. Now, I'm not saying the teacher was evil-minded or that had bad intentions, but the point is whether or not these children at this young age are able to comprehend and internalize what's being said to them. I can give you an example. My daughter, I couldn't have children. Okay? So our daughter is a surrogate for one of my college girlfriends. My daughter, when she started coming to me with questions, I gave her one little thing at a time, one little thing. She, it started out with, I was singing to her, "I got you, Sydney, for the Miami Zoo, Sydney." And she said, "No, you didn't. I came from in there." And she pointed at my belly. And I said, "No, you didn't." She said, "Yes, I did." And I said, "No, I borrowed someone else's belly." Two weeks later, she came back, "Why did you borrow someone else's belly?" "Well, when mommy was having problems, I did that." And then she came back and she said to me even, "I went sisters." I said, "You have sisters." She said, "Who are my sisters?" And I told her, and she said, "Why do they live with us?" I said, "Oh, they live with your mom, and you live with your mom, you know. But you have to do it piecemeal, and that's how they get it." You know, but you have to do it piecemeal and that's how they get in, it's not overwhelming. And that comes from my life experience of explaining things to children. And, um, my, my sister or my daughter's sister, she's gay. There's nothing here about being gay, not gay. I've had gay friends since I was in high school. You know, this is just another propaganda ploy, just propaganda. So anyway-
Well, I, I guess, I guess the question I have, I think all of us would agree that a, a seven year old should not be told, you absolutely must marry a man when you're adult. We, I also don't believe that a teacher's likely to say that. And I mean, do you feel like that maybe a seven year old? I'm not saying that on purpose, but that's not the most mature age. So maybe they misunderstood, maybe they misinterpreted what the teacher said. Maybe that wasn't exactly what the teacher said.
I do think that and, but I'm, I'm the adult in the room, right? I think what the teacher said to the other little boy, when he was saying, where's the moms, where's the moms? I think she might've said, it's allowed. But my little boy heard-
You said it, you said it was required before, that you have to marry a man.
Yes.
So that's wrong. It, it is allowed. So that would be-
No, 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 no. The, the first part was she said, he has to marry a man. The second part was what they'd remember. He said, the teacher said, it's the law. And what I think the teacher said to the other little boy was it's allowed, not it's the law. That's my interpretation, but I wasn't there and I have to give him the benefit of the doubt because he was upset. And on the big picture of things, it doesn't matter exactly what was said. It's the fact that the whole topic went that way, that, that whole conversation. And that's, and I'm glad you agree that is, it is very young for children to learn that. And even the, um, the-
No, I, I did not say that. I said, what it was inappropriate is to tell somebody they have to do that. To tell somebody that they have to marry a man would be absolutely inappropriate. I'm not taking a position on what age you need to tell somebody about this.
So, and I, I just wanted to say, uh, a lot of the, the gay, well, gay people that I hang out with, they're on board that is, they don't want anyone talking to their kids as young about sex. And they don't want a heterosexual man, heterosexual woman, gay man, gay woman. So I think this is a parent issue.
So you should not say that you cannot marry a woman either, is what you're saying. Do not tell a child that they can't marry a woman either, because that would be talking about sex. Is that what I'm hearing?
I don't, I disagree with you that that's talking about sex. What I'm saying-
You just said it was for, if, if you're talking about a man, it's talking about sex though. So i- is it talking about sex or is it talking about marriage? I mean, they're two different things. Marrying a man, you're saying is talking about sex. Marrying a woman, you're saying is not. So why is that different?
I, I don't, I don't think marrying a man's talking about sex. I don't know where, I'm sorry if you misunderstood that. I think marrying a man is, is just looking at families. That's all. And families are different nowadays and, and we all realize that. And what I think you're missing in the big picture here is that parents, whether they're gay, straight, doesn't matter. We're all on board that our children are too young to be exposed to certain things. That's all. No, no harm, no foul. Age appropriate, that's where I stand. This is not a gay, a non-gay issue. It's an age appropriate issue.
Okay, go, yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Thank you.
Um, regarding age appropriateness and the age appropriateness of these sort of discussions, I wanted to, uh, to ask you about something that's, that was in your questionnaire regarding, uh, HB 1557, uh, the parental rights and education law.
I'm sorry, I lost you.
I wanted to ask you about something in your questionnaire about HB 1557, the parental rights and education law.
Sure.
Okay. So you said, uh, that, um, let me pull up right where the questionnaire is. Okay. So you said that the, the bill, you know, bans the classroom discussion about sexual orientation or gender identity to kindergarten through third grade and banning the instruction to be limited to age appropriate curriculum. You went on to say that, uh, what's age appropriate, uh, is obviously going to vary from whether a family has liberal or conservative views. It'll vary depending on the child and the family. If that is true, that age appropriateness will always vary. And if this law makes it, uh, that families can sue if they believe that such a discussion was not age appropriate, doesn't this HB 1557 in effect ban any discussion K through 12 of sexual orientation and gender identity? Because there may always be 12th graders whose families don't agree with these discussions.
Well, I, I think we're going way off pre here. This has nothing to do with the school board. Now you're asking for Leo advice, but what I will say is that, um, I think it's up to the parents. I think there can be consensus made of, of what is acceptable and we need to all come together. I don't think we need to be battling one another. I think everyone will agree that there's a, a line where we say, no, this isn't quite going to do that for me. You know, this is offensive or something like that. For example, uh, the one book, Gender Queer, that everyone's looking at. It's a, a boy with another boy's, um, mouth, another boy or another girl's mouth on his appendage. And people are offended by that. It doesn't matter if you're straight or not. You're saying, well, that's across the line. That's across the line. And even Julian agreed to that. He referred to the book as pornographic. So, um, I think I, I trust in people, especially in the people of Broward County, that, that we can resolve this. And, uh, if not, then, then they go to court, but I don't even know that I get that far.
Look, I want to ask Mr. Julian a question about this, the same topic. Mr. Julian, uh, are you certain? Are you certain that supporters of your opponent, Brenda Pham, at a polling place in Davie, distributed copies of the book, Gender Queer, and distributed publicly in ways that it might've been seen by young children?
Uh, I'm positive that they were showing the book to children and, and parents that are going to vote. Um, I'm positive that they spent at multiple polling places, um, that book and showing the book of the same picture. Um, as far as giving the book to people, other people, I, I have no idea if they were actually distributing the book, but I know that they were using the book as a fear tactic. And fortunately, we see that on, on many, in many different races. Marco Rubio is running a campaign right now, an ad, saying that our, our schools are indoctrinating our children, using this, that and the other. It's, it, it's fear based politics. Our schools are not using that book in their public libraries. It's just not a thing. Um, to say that they are is a blatant lie. Uh, to say that anyone else is, uh, corroborating that it's in the schools, anyone that works for the school system, is a blatant lie. I, I've been speaking with everyone from the top down in our school system. We, we have to stop allowing people to fear bait.
Okay. Ms. Pham, um, do you have any knowledge that this book, Gender Queer, is being distributed in the Broward school system?
Um, I specifically know. The knowledge I get is provided to me by people that research the libraries and what they have catalogued as listed. So do I actually physically go into, uh, each school and look? No, I do not. I rely on the information that I provided from that, uh, catalog, which we rely upon from the school.
And is Mr. Julian, is Mr. Julian correct?
Who, who does the, who does the cataloguing? Who does, who's the, who are the people that are telling you this?
I'm sorry. Hold on, I'm sorry, my phone's ringing. So, uh, that will be parents, concerned parents. And also, Mr. Julian had said, there's people at the polls, there's no, I don't have any people at the polls waving books or doing anything. They're concerned parents.
When you say concerned parents-
They're not my campaign workers. They might be supporters because they're concerned parents, but that's a difference. If they have concerns and they want to know where someone stands, this is the first time since, uh, the book was brought out, that, uh, Stephen Julian has even spoken whether, where he stands on books. So in fact, in my blog, I, I thanked him for that. And I said, if this poll worker, or not poll worker, if this person comes out and is waving a book and that's what it takes for us, King and I, both to be on the same page, then I think that's great. It brought us together. We agree on a point.
When you say, uh, a group of parents, is, are they, is this a specific organization of parents or are you talking about just various individual parents?
No, various individual parents, concerned parents.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. I don't have any, uh, individual parental groups working for me. No, thank you.
Ms. Pham, have you, uh, pardon the background noise. Ms. Pham, have you asked the governor's office or the governor's people, uh, for an endorsement of your candidacy?
Yes, I have.
And what was, what was their response?
Uh, I guess I'm not conservative enough. I'm not sure. I, like I said, I consider myself a, um, centralist and a, uh, common sense person. I know you want to love to call me radical, it's just not there. So I'm going to do what's right for the kids. I am always going to do what's right for the kids. I'm not going to vote on party lines because that's not what is important here. What is important is doing the right thing so we can get the right result. These kids need to be able to support themselves. They need to have confidence in themselves and we need to do that instead of breaking them down. Right now, more than 50% of the students can't read or write on the, the, their, um, academic level. I did, I read the reports, only 17.9 of our graduates are expected to make it through a four-year college from the 2021 graduating class. That's dismal. So we got to set aside the politics and we've got to just focus on the, the kids at hand. We must. And that's what I'm doing.
What do you feel like needs to be done in order to improve academic achievement?
Uh, actually, I have, I have a whole list of things and questions I would love to ask you. But one of the things, um, there is a, uh, I know Steve is real interested in, in, um, mental health. So there's a mental health program where Broward County had received more than, uh, plus of $15 million in state aid. And, um, they've been sitting on more than $5 million, um, since 21. And 20 to 21 is our most dreadful years with the pandemic, lockdowns, masks, COVID. And I'm, I'm curious, and I'm sure he will be too, why this money wasn't expended. Um, and, uh, up to this date, there was another organization that wanted to, um, get peers to be in the schools and they were asking for, I think, $177,000 donation. And they wanted to, uh, be students that helped other students to avoid, um, suicide. And I wanted to know why they didn't donate to that. I chat, well, I couldn't find where they donated to it. Maybe it's, it's just not there that I could, could locate. But, um, I, I just don't understand why we're still sitting on that money. Excuse me. In addition, that program from the state, 57 schools from Broward County opted not to receive the money to take mental health assistance. I want to know why they opted out. What's going on? Is this, is this not a good program for us? Are they having less, this, these schools having less difficulties? They don't have the mental health issues that we have in the public schools because it was mostly charter schools that, that opted out. And it's very curious, um, why would they not take something that has no cost to them? So those are the kind of questions I look for and ask. Um, I know Steve, you wanted to know about me. This is my forte where I, I dig in and I look kind of like a journalist. I, I dig and I look what's going on. I look for the red flag. That's my attorney issue. And, and I will pull it out and I just want answers to the questions. I mean, I'm not telling you or going in decisively, I want an answer this way or that way. I'm open minded. I want to hear what's going on so we can improve from that point forward.
May I ask one question?
Yes, go ahead, yep.
You know, I, I hope we would all dive in and do real research. Uh, but you had just said that you relied on others telling you hearsay on the books that are in our school. Uh, you said that you haven't gone in and looked, there had been no research.
No, I relied on the research they did with the, um, the categorization from the actual school librarian. So if anyone's at fault here, it would be, um, the records in the, the school libraries not being accurate because they're pulling up the records, they're screenshotting them. So, um, what was I going to say? And you're saying relying on hearsay? You're relying on hearsay of people saying that I said you're a criminal? Come on. So-
Just, just to clarify things, we've, and, and maybe somebody else on my panel can, can, can expand on this, but I've got a statement, I've got a statement from the Broward County School District saying that the book, Gender Queer, has never been distributed in the Broward County School District. But Ms. Pham, your blog has what looks like a catalog, uh, screenshot that lists and enumerates 19 specific schools where this book is, can be found. The school district says it's not so.
The, the screenshot, if you look, it's for the book, it's called, It's Perfectly Normal. If you look in the, um, the screenshots for those, it's perfectly normal. And I did get an email in reference to Gender Queer that is in either a middle or a high school. I don't remember which one. But I can also tell you, which is interesting, an interesting fact I learned, that unless it's, if it's not purchased by the school district and it's donated, it's, won't always appear in the catalog. So this can be from a parent that their child came across it or whatever. So just because it's not on the list, doesn't mean it's not there because it could have been donated and then it's not categorized.
Do you think there should be any resources available for LGBTQ children?
What do you mean by resources?
Meaning that there's, they have questions about their sexuality. Should there be anything? I mean, it sounds almost like anything about that topic you believe is inappropriate for children. But let's say you're a seven or eight year old child that's dealing with that issue. Um, if it's in the library, is that inappropriate because some, uh, somebody might see it and think, a parent might think it's inappropriate. And I'm not talking about ones that are the, the very sexually graphic ones like Gender Queer. I'm talking about just your, your typical, uh, ones.
There comes my common sense. I'm a normalist. No, I, I don't think that should, uh, should be removed. I don't. So thank you for answering that, Scott. Really, thanks for asking that. No, I, that's the difference. I, if it's real graphic and everything, that's a different story. But, um, I, I think that we, it's a different world and we all have to get along. And I don't, uh, maybe you see a lot more hate than I see, but I, I don't see, I see a lot of diversity. I think in the diversity category, Broward County's doing great. You know, and the school board has done great. So-
No, we, I mean, we, it's not hate we see, it's just maybe whatever's been on your website. That's raised a lot of questions from people that you mentioned, so.
No, I've never called for book banning. What I, what I've called for in the past is like with Gender Queer, I didn't even say, oh, go burn this book or whatever like that. What we said was, this is available on Amazon, it's available in the public libraries, you can go to a bookstore, but we just don't want it here. You know, it's a little bit too graphic for us here in, in the public school library. So if you can, uh, get my vibe or my gist from that, that's, that's where I am. That's where I stand.
Okay. Mr. Julian, we asked, uh, Ms. Pham, uh, a question about, uh, academic achievement. I did not get a chance to ask you that. So what's your feeling about what, uh, how do you feel about the academic performance of, in Broward County schools right now and what needs to be done to improve it?
Uh, well, we're the lowest grade point of the tri, uh, tri counties, West Palm, Miami. There's so much we need to be doing. One, first and foremost, in my opinion, when we look at just the data, we pay our teachers less than both Palm Beach and Miami by far. Um, we don't have the support system for our teachers. Uh, we don't have the support system for our students. We have to be able to bring in quality teachers, retain quality teachers and show our kids that they're loved and supported. If we're not providing a supporting, healthy environment by, you know, ostracizing individuals that may be of the LGBTQ community or the African American community by saying, uh, you can't learn American history, uh, they're not going to be in a place where they can learn healthily. So I would go about making it an open, inclusive school system. I would go about supporting our teachers financially so they can afford to live here So I would go about making it an open, inclusive school system. I would go about supporting our teachers financially so they can afford to live here in Broward County. You know, we pay our teachers forty seven five after taxes. You're looking around three thousand and change a month. The average rent in Broward County is two thousand five hundred. We're pricing our own teachers out of our community. How can we expect to have a quality school system without taking care of our teachers?
Ms. Pham, he he alluded to critical race theory, I think. So what's your um feeling about that? That's obviously one of the um big areas of contention uh among uh different people uh in the state. So um what's your feeling about that? Do you feel like Broward School teaches it and do they inappropriately teach it? What's your sort of what's your feeling on race and equity issues and critical race?
Yeah, let me start with the broader picture and then we'll come back to that. We'll bring that in. But um we're talking about trying to improve Broward County schools. Um I hate to say this, guys, but I listen to these teachers and it's showing me the money, showing me the money. They really deserve um additional salary increases. And I have a plan. No one else comes up with solutions. They they just talk. It's empty words. I I'm a planner. I I it's just the legal in me. And my plan is to um get a trust account, an interest bearing a trust account. And we put some money from that referendum inside that account. And we also have a cost of living increase in that trust account, and it can be non-invadable. And the only people that can that money can come out for is for the teachers and the employees. And they are protected. So if they want, if we want to put on it, because this has to be a tri-party agreement, teachers, school board, and um also we can get some parental input. But what we can do is allow if they want to, ten percent of the teachers vote, we can remove some of the funds for something else. I mean, ninety percent has to be a vote, but it has to be up to the teachers. It has to be teacher controlled. From that point on, then the next time they need a raise, the teachers aren't start playing catch up. They're already at the level because as we're pouring money out of this trust account, it's being replaced within thirty or ninety days, thirty or ninety days. So it never gets depleted. And when the teachers ask for this increase, it's the cream. It's the cream. We have to put something into effect where they're not scrambling every two years. And so that's one thing. And I think if we bring the money back, we're gonna bring the quality teachers back. That's why I want to talk to you about that. In addition, uh we do have students failing and 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 I get it. I get it. I get it. But what we also need is our top two schools in Broward County, believe it or not, are uh Somerset Academy, McFatter, I'm sorry, three, McFatter Technical and Atlantic Technical. So two and three are technical schools. And I've been doing a lot of research and these technical schools are considered, they're called career and technical education. They are backed up. They can't get um enough seats to, you know, they can't, they have so many students, they 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 are overwhelmed. They can't get them into the classrooms. So we have so many options here and we have so many students that are choosing not to go to college. We need this skill development. One of the things we can rely on is we have three airports nearby. We got Palm Beach, we got Fort Lauderdale, we have Florida Miami. Why aren't we working with these airlines? Why aren't we training our students that they can go into being flight attendants? Because you can get go into a school to be a flight attendant with a G GED, GED. And if we get them trained where they have these great jobs, you're gonna start at more than twenty dollars an hour, an opportunity to travel, give them options. And then even the flight attendants get the opportunity, if they want to become pilots, the uh airlines will uh supplement the the costs of that. So I'm just saying, that's just one industry. I was talking to another man, I'm a talker. I was talking to this one man who is a heavy equipment operator. He's doing work over now on uh the West Coast because of the hurricane. He said they start at fifty dollars an hour and they don't have anybody qualified on these machines and they are willing to train them. So I said, would you come into a school? Would you be willing to come in? And he said, absolutely, absolutely. Because that's a great opportunity for someone to start out making money. You don't need to be academically inclined. You just need to have skill set to fill that. And there's so many other. He talked about electricians. He talked about um elevator operators. Um he talked about plumbers. They would all be willing to do this. If we can get some more opportunity to allow these students to attend these classes, we can help fill a lot of these jobs for these kids. And and that's I'm the building the bridges person. So I I really think we need to look at these technical career schools, they used to call them vocational schools, and build upon that. I mean, we need to teach uh florists, bakers, there's so many different occupations nowadays, we have computer skills. Can you imagine what we could do if we have classes just dedicated to computer skills? My daughter, my daughter is a singer songwriter. And she, you know, the soundboard in the recording studio? She said that someone didn't understand what she was trying to explain. And I put her in a class, it was an all-girl class, by the way, of girls learning that soundboard. And I said, sweetie, the next time you go in there, you don't have to explain. You sit down and you show them. Do you see what I'm taking you're you're taking from being powerless to empowering? And that's what we need to do.
All right.
All right. Uh oh, the last thing, the CRT. Want me to still go into that? He's gone.
Yes, briefly. No, he's here. He's there. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Hi, Scott. Um CRT, Critical Race Theory. I I know you guys all know that my my husband is from Africa. He came over when he was eleven. Um I've been in a biracial marriage. Yeah, I call myself a biracial marriage because um my husband and I have both been called names at different points in time. And and he's had his DNA done and he's definitely African. Um he's a he's a wonderful, wonderful person. And he came over here with nothing, not even speaking English. I grew up, uh spent the majority of my time uh in a trailer park. I grew up just with my father. And um my father um was a construction worker. My mother didn't graduate from middle school. And we didn't have a lot. So that's why they say I'm not from a silver spoon family. I'm self-made and I'm proud of that. And I'm not gonna be ashamed because I fought to get where I am. Um so going back to that, my husband and I made it on our own. It had nothing to do with skin color. Uh it no matter what came at us. And for someone to come into our marriage and start preaching CRT to our daughter to say dislike your mother because she's white and and love your father because he's not white and and your mother's oppressed your father all her life, she's white? No, you know what my husband calls me? Not his oppressor, his impressive. So sleep with that one after thirty years together. I mean, this is about people. You cannot just generalize and put everyone into this flock. And that's what CRT is doing. They're labeling people by what they see on the outside, not what they see on the inside, not what people are about, not our values, not our merit, not what we feel. Not our integrity. So is CRT good for our children? No, it's not.
We've uh we've passed the twelve noon hour. We've been at this close to an hour. So uh I'm gonna wrap it up. I'm gonna give each of the candidates about a minute to make a closing statement. Uh and we'll just we'll go in alphabetical order, uh which I think is the way you're gonna appear on the ballot anyway. So uh Brenda Pham, you have the floor for a minute for closing statement.
I really, I really thank you guys for um having me on today, Sunset. No, I really do. And um I read I read your articles and some of them I just to hey, 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 you know, I'm good for you guys. But most importantly, there is a lot of uh propaganda and untruths out there about who I am and what I am and what I stand for. And I I think today has set the record straight that I am just a normal individual that's a parent that cares, that cares about this community, that cares about our children, and I want to do the right thing. I I'll tell you during this race, I've even said, if someone else comes along and comes up to me and is better qualified, I will pull out and I will support you a hundred percent. Because it's not about the person sitting here. It's about what the person sitting here does, what we represent and the values and 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 how we are with people and children and and the community. You know, and I I've done ten years of free legal service. That wasn't something I did because I expected a reward. I did that because I care about children. And I'm still doing free legal services for parents, parents that are in crisis. I don't ask on the other end, is your child black or white? Is your child gay or straight? I I I don't ask what gender they identify. I ask, do they need my help? What's the issue? I don't need the details. And I get to work and I take action and I get them to a safe place. So.
All right.
That's what I'd like to say I represent.
All right. Thank you for that closing statement. Stephen Julian, about a minute, please.
Thank you all again. I I really appreciate you having us uh to talk about our goals for the school system. Um I just want to say being born here in Broward County, knowing what we need to do for our school systems, having the support of everyone in our community from receiving the Sunset Hall endorsement prior to receiving the teachers unions, uh principals union, police, fire, uh M Gauge, Save Action Pack, Dolphins Democratic Club, uh everybody in our community, it it means the world to me. Um I want to be able to represent Broward County, the the one of the most diverse counties in Florida. There are so many people from each and every socioeconomic group, race, religion, creed, credo, sexual orientation. And I want you to know, even though we have rules now like the Don't Say Gay Bill and the Stop Woke Act, uh I want you all to know I'm here for you. I care for you. Um and I will represent you. So I'm looking forward to your vote come November eighth and I I'm looking forward to really providing the best in class school system uh an example for the rest of Florida to look at and say they are doing it right. Thank you. Please vote November eighth.
Okay, uh Brenda Pham and Stephen Julian, thank you both very much for being here with us today. We appreciate it. We hope voters do as well. And everyone votes on November eighth. Thanks again.